Ms. Monier White, are we ready to roll here with the?
Roll.
Okay, great. All right, well, this evening, we have a meeting of the Board Personnel Subcommittee meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Adam Blanchard, and he can lead us through the agenda. So, Dr. Blanchard.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Superintendent Roberts. So, really quickly, I'd sent an agenda. In the agenda are two items. The first item is the Technology Services Administrative Roles and Responsibilities. And the second part of the agenda, we want to talk about a timeline for hire. Really, the purpose of our meeting today is stemming out of a board meeting in September in which the Board of Education approved the purchase of student laptops, essentially maneuvering the district to a one-to-one district. And so, as we're preparing the arrival of those laptops, I believe we have, Ms. Monier White, 9,000 laptops set to arrive in January. And we have, we already have 3,000 onsite that are getting
Correct.
imaged, and we have 9,000 set to arrive in January.
Correct.
And so, when Ms. Monier White and Superintendent Roberts and Mr. Sederlin discuss this item with the board through the Subcommittee process, and then, as the board had conversation around it, one of the, one of the questions, or one of the things that was brought up was a report that Jeff Elaine had completed through his company, Dot Bridge, a couple of years ago. And the purpose of that, that report or that study was a two-pronged approach. It was really to look at the security of our system and our infrastructure. And additionally, it was looking at the scope of responsibilities and duties of our staff down there in the Technology Services Department. So, so when we're looking at the deployment of potentially 12,000 more laptops, one of the items that Mr. Elaine pointed out in his report was the need to hire additional staff. And that additional staff was in the form of a couple of different areas. And again, when we talked to the board about this in September, one of the questions they had, because we had discussed the, the need to hire another administrative position down in the Technology Services Department, and the board was curious of what would the scope and responsibilities be for that newly hired administrator? And so, Ms. Monier White has put together a job description, qualifications, and responsibilities for what we're calling the position as a District Systems and Desktop Support Coordinator, Coordinator. And so, what we're trying to do is, we've tried to look at the current roles and responsibilities of our Desktop System Supervisor and our Network Systems and Security Supervisor, and really look at what they're working on and what they're doing, and ensure that they're doing maybe more of the technical work. And the new position will handle, it's not a negative term, but more of the entry level, more than what our help desk can do and are authorized to do, but some of the entry-level items that will then free up our Network System and Security Supervisor to focus in on some of those areas that Jeff Elaine had indicated. And, you know, at some point here, I know that the three board members will have questions about what those are. And I know Ms. White has gone through Jeff's report several times now and highlighted what, what those security responsibilities would be and how our supervisor is going to handle those. Now, again, the rationale for hiring the additional administrator is really because of the complications of the system that's going to need to be, really, how we're going to have to add to the system in order to manage these 12,000 devices. There's a lot that goes with computer management. There's policies that need to be written. And so, you know what? I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Monier White to talk just a little bit about the security, the added security that the one supervisor is going to oversee. But then, I want, Sarah, if you could focus in on the new position of District Systems and our new Desktop Support Coordinator, and kind of a high level, what they will do. And then, we'll turn it over to our three board members if they have questions about that administrative hiring that we're looking to post here. So, go ahead, Ms. Monier White.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Blanchard. So, we, with the 12,000 computers, not only is it more computers, but we really need to look at our infrastructure. Previous to our shutdown in March, we had never had checkout student laptops. So, in order to make those laptops secure off-site and make sure that they are legally compliant and filtered correctly, we'll have to implement a new web filtering gateway. So, we do have one currently running with the laptop checkout students are using right now. We're going to move to a web-based web filtering system. This is going to accommodate the additional 12,000 laptops that we've purchased since last March. And it's going to take some pressure off our network so those computers aren't bogging down what we have going on onsite currently. So, that's something we're working on bidding. That will be an entirely new system that involves both our Desktop Supervisor and our Network Supervisor currently, because our Network Supervisor manages the filtering. But then, each laptop has to be set up to have the client put on it to make sure when students take them home, everything's filtered correctly. In addition, we have been working to implement a system called SCCM. This is a system center endpoint management system through Microsoft that will replace the older Altiris. And this will manage our computers district-wide. It will help manage all of our onsite computers, including computer labs, CTE labs, and staff computers. And at the same time, we're implementing something called Intune, which will help us manage student computers off-site, beyond the web filtering. What programs do they have access to, and what do we give them? So, that in and of itself adds quite a bit of responsibility to our department. We would like the new position to help us implement those along with the two supervisors currently in place, help learn those so we have extra hands to manage it. That will provide some redundancy in our department that we don't currently have when supervisors are out or have other responsibilities. We'll have really backup staff that are familiar with systems and can help manage them. And also, by freeing up the current supervisors, we can focus on some of those long-term goals that were set forth by Jeff Elaine. A lot of it focuses on security, making sure people have appropriate policies to not be able to download on computers or access certain things on our network. For example, we've been working for a while to introduce multi-factor authentication. We did have one user account hacked last week. If multi-factor authentication had been in place, that hack would have been stopped in its tracks. Now, we were able to stop it. There was no lasting damage, but we could have stopped it earlier. And by taking some of the daily responsibilities, some of the day-to-day management of our systems off our supervisors, they can focus on the broader security end where they're doing more vulnerability scanning and making sure everything is secure throughout the district. I'm not sure if anyone has questions or if you'd like me to expand on some of that?
No, so let me just, let me jump in. So, this is, this is what we're talking about again, is just that administrative position. So, and then, if you have questions, we can, you can ask those at any point, and you all know that. But I just want to point out two other things that we've discussed at that board meeting that we were talking about. And one was the need for more help desk technicians. We know that with the addition of 12,000 end unit, or end-user units or devices, our help desk is going to need more staff. And so, we are looking to add two more help desk staff members to that. And then, the other piece that we're not quite ready to have conversations with the Personnel Subcommittee, but will, because we are still in the early phases of the conversation with the Clerical Association, is we had talked about the media clerks at the building level, providing some support for these devices. And we were, like I said, we're not ready to have those conversations. We're still here formally with Subcommittee, as we're still talking with Clerical Association. And we really want to make sure that what we're doing aligns with, with what their collective bargaining agreement allows, but also makes sense district-wide for our teachers and our students. So, we really, that one is going to take a little bit of time because we want to make sure we're making the wise decision with how we're going to utilize those staff, but still can provide the service that our students and our, our teachers have come to expect out of our, our media clerks. But as it relates to the administrative posting, did you have any questions or thoughts or concerns, or maybe something that, again, we didn't explain? Again, this was at a high, I know we kind of talked high level here, but is there anything that we can help explain to you?
I have, I have a couple of questions. What's the salary on this position?
So, the salary range that we have down is, it can be a minimum of about $86,000, up to a maximum of $122,000. But I shouldn't tell you that that includes your, that's your salary benefits, retirement FICA. That's the whole package. That's the total package. So, that's not the exact, that's not the dollar amount. That's everything that would be included. That's our total cost. So, the minimum is 85, 587 to a maximum of about 122, 123,000.
And who does this person report to directly, and who, or is the position subordinate?
Yeah, so this, this position would not have any subordinates. They would report to, they, they essentially, all the administrators report to Sarah Monier White down there. But these two would interact, or this position would interact closely with our two current supervisors down there. Our help desk would still report to our Desktop System Supervisor, but this, this, this position is a coordinator position. They don't have anybody that would report to them. But they would essentially report to Desktop System Supervisor and Network System Security Supervisor, but ultimately, under the direction of Ms. Monier White.
So, where does this salary fall in comparison to the other two supervisors?
So, this, this position is a coordinator position, and it aligns with, we have another coordinating coordinator position already down in that office. So, those two positions are in alignment. And then, as I've indicated, we have the two supervisors. We have the two supervisors that are down there, and then, we have the director. So, I don't have the exact dollar figure on the supervisors in front of me here, but it does fall, they do, the coordinator that we're, the position we're proposing falls underneath those supervisors as it relates to salary.
And what about the help desk positions? Those are the same as what's already existing salaries?
Yes, correct. Those would be in alignment with the current help desk, which fall under the Clerical Association. So, yes, those are, those are, would be just in alignment with them. Are there any other, like, specific questions about, you know, and it can be about anything, I guess, at this point, regarding this position, these positions?
So, what is the benefit package on that salary? How much is the benefit package worth?
Yep. A single subscriber could be anywhere from 6,000 to 8,000, full family 12,000 to 15,000.
So, this basic salary, starting salary would be 70 grand?
65, roughly, because there's roll-ups in there.
So, 65 would be the starting
It'd be around there, yeah.
plus benefits?
Yes. And we have that salary schedule already worked out with the other coordinator that's down there. And the, the scope of responsibilities align, again, different responsibilities, but the scope kind of fall in alignment with the other coordinator position that we already have down there.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it's important to keep in mind, we're making a very large investment in these computers, really, for our students. We're making investment in our students. And to keep those functioning correctly, to make sure they are in the hands of students, not on a shelf broken, to make sure our network is protected, I feel these positions are very important to keep all that running. Really, before we shut down last March, we were pretty computer-dependent. But over the last eight months, we've become more and more dependent on technology for teaching and learning. So, we really want to make sure that all keeps running and running well. We want to make sure our security is up to date. We don't want to find ourselves in a position like some other local districts last year that were subject to ransomware. We want to continue to be proactive and try to move forward in terms of security. And we just need some hands to help us do that.
I think you already pre-understaffed, based on that report, if I remember correctly.
Correct. That's, that's correct. And the report, really, when we presented to the, to the Board of Education, we weren't, we weren't in a position at that point to, to consider this. We were, we were, we were getting through things. We were, you know, limping along. Things were, we still were under warranty, even though it was end-of-life warranty. So, we were able to, to manage. What we had done with Jeff Elaine's report from Dot Bridge, what we had done was, we had classified things and color-coded things in a green, yellow, and red format. Green things were the, the low-hanging fruit that we could do, cost efficient or effective. And yellow were the, the ones that were, you know, planning out a year or two. And the red were just, those things were not feasible. And one of the red was, it was a lot of staffing. What we're proposing with two help desk technicians isn't close to what Jeff Elaine at Dot Bridge is recommending. But we also know that we, we still have to operate within the confines of our budget. And, and really, you know, as you all know, the approval of, of that, the laptop purchases, it was a great thing for our student and our school community, but really, kind of puts us in a 180 in the tech department, kind of in a different direction than we had planned. And, but we're, it's not anything that we can't overcome. But you are correct. We, we were definitely understaffed back there, and even more so now with 12,000 more end-user devices. So, if there's no more questions, I can talk about a time, just, just, it's going to be a brief timeline or a high-level timeline, I should say. If there's no objections at this point, or I don't hear anyone, you know, adamantly saying no to, to the posting of this position, the plan is to put it out, put it out on the website and market it to our normal audiences and have our, have that out there starting tomorrow. We keep our postings out there seven days, seven days. So, my hope would be that this would come down, well, that's my hope, it would come down the week of Thanksgiving. And that, that would give Ms. Monier White some time to look at that, start looking at it, at the, and reviewing those candidates with her team when we return from the Thanksgiving break, and setting up interviews, or screening candidates, and setting up interviews. And our hope would be to bring a recommended candidate to the Board of Education in the second board meeting of December. And it's a tight timeline. It's, it's one that's doable. It's, it's not, not as tight as some we've had. But our hope is by mid-January, depending on that person's availability and how much notice they need to give a previous employer, assuming that they have to do that, we would hope that by mid-January, at the latest, they'd be onsite. I really would like them to start the new year with us. As, you know, I've indicated, we have these devices coming. And again, they're not going to be the ones that are, this person won't be the, the individual hands-on with this device, and each device that's coming in the door. But there are systems that need to be built. And that has to happen by our administrative team. And so, it'll be, it's, it's critically important that we, we get someone in place here rather quickly. But we'll, we'll do it the right way. Kind of running along the same timeline is the two help desk staff positions. And we're still working through a couple of things. We want to make sure that with the way that we're trying to, to have our help desk be available for students and parents, we're really looking at what, what the hours of operation would be, or hours of work would these two applicants be. Typically, the, our help desk works seven to four, but they have been working additional hours throughout this pandemic as we've tried to get devices in students' hands and answering questions and emails. We've opened up phone lines. And Ms. Monier White and her admin team have been working late hours just handling end-user issues. Almost like a, a help desk all the way through the evening hour. So, we're, we're talking about whether or not we want to have these two positions, these two help desk positions, run a different shift schedule. Maybe instead of ending at four, they would end at six o'clock at night. And so, we're still having those conversations of whether or not we want to look at something like that. Or Ms. Monier White's going to review her data to see what help desk tickets have come in. Did they come in heavy when we first launched the laptops? Is it like most people, when they get a new device, you know, is there questions that first couple of weeks? Or is there a need to have someone, like I said, year-round, that's available, you know, maybe till later? And so, we're, we're in conversation with, with her department about that. But again, the plan would be to post those as well within the next week in, in a similar timeframe, to have recommended candidates hopefully onsite by mid-January so they, they could start work. So, that's kind of the timeline. We're continuing to work with the Association on the Media Clerks. And like I said, I don't have a spelled-out timeline for that. Our hope is, and it doesn't, this is, sounds like a lengthy timeline for that, but by the end of this school year, we would have a, a good game plan for those media clerks in place if we are indeed going to have them be assisting with this endeavor of supporting these end-user devices. So, that's our timeline on this. I don't know if there's any questions regarding the timeline? That's kind of straightforward. Or was there any other questions regarding the, the agenda or concerns at this point? All right.
No, I'm good with it.
So, I just want to thank Ms. Monier White. She's had a Herculean job for a long time. In fact, I think since you became our Director of Technology Services, and you've served this district well, extremely well. I think you're our most valuable player over the last so many months. But I think it's a wonderful plan. It will certainly benefit our students in our entire district to have a secure network and to have people that can focus their attention and efforts on specific tasks. Because when people are able to do that, that serves our teachers and serves our students who we actually are here to serve all the time. So, thank you, Ms. Monier White, and thank you for your attention to this matter, our members of the Board of Education.
Thank you. So, we do have a few minutes before the live meeting starts. You might, if you're here, just be sure to mute your mic because we can't stop the live stream. So, just want to mute your mic. If you're here, just be sure to mute your mic because we can't stop the live stream, so just unmute your mic. Yeah, I wanted to see if he's going to be having me do roll call.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, yes. Yes. Yes, Laura. Your roll call, especially everybody not here.
You want me to do it after you call the meeting to order?
Um.
Or do it now?
Sweet. I heard George. George, can you hear me? George?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, and then how about Jill? Jill, are you out there?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, good. I think we're all good, Laura, for everybody else is here, so, okay. You guys ready? Everybody? Roll call to order the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education meeting for November 16th, 2020. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Time will be 6:30. Start. Thank you. Okay, welcome, everybody, to the board meeting for this week. Moving to additions and deletions, we do need to make an amendment this evening, so can I have a motion to amend the agenda, please? Moved by Ms. Pyden. Supported by Ms. Aquino. We're going to amend the agenda to add a motion. Ms. Cardamone, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Aquino.
Yes.
Mr. Benard.
Yes.
Cardamone, yes. Mr. Mingzak.
No.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. Pyden. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Ms. Pyden. I can't hear if her microphone is on or not. Mr. Soba.
Yes.
Motion carries six-one.
Okay, thank you. All right, need a motion to amend the agenda. To add item G2, motion to approve return to remote learning grades K-5 and grades K through 15 CLP. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pyden. Support by Ms. Aquino. Okay. Again, under new business, add item G2, motion to approve return to remote learning, grades K-5, grades K through 15 CLP. Can we have a, any questions, comments by the board? Okay. Can we have a roll call vote, Ms. Cardamone, please?
Ms. Pyden.
Yes.
Ms. Aquino. Mr. Benard.
Yes.
Cardamone, yes. Ms. Mingzak.
No.
Mr. Patterson. I can't hear the answer.
Andy?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, he says.
And Mr. Soba.
Yes.
Six-one, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay. Moving to item C on the agenda, recognition presentations, Mr. Roberts.
You have a couple of things this evening. First, we'll start a little bit differently this evening. I would like to recognize a student who passed away two weeks ago, one of our students. And that's Jordan Robson, who was a 10th grader at Chippewa Valley High School. Jordan died by suicide, and I would like to read a little bit about him. Jordan was a 10th grader at Chippewa Valley High School in Clinton Township and was a proud member of the swim team and the concert band. He enjoyed bike riding, camping, hiking, kayaking, gaming, traveling with his family, family gatherings, dates with his grandmother. He loved his two dogs, Jax and Tate, and he enjoyed helping his neighbors with their lawn care. He was in a youth group at Kensington Community Church in Clinton Township, and he is survived by many people who I'm sure loved him deeply, including his parents, Rob and Ginny, and his two older brothers, Brendan and Jacob. So if we could just have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. It's always hard to lose one of ours, and I think this is even harder. So my message would be to anyone, especially our students, who realize they may need help. This district has made a huge commitment to be there for our students, and I would just ask that they please reach out, that you are not alone. Thank you. All right, also under presentations this evening, I want to talk a little bit this evening about the motion that was just put into our board agenda through an amendment. And this has to do with our instructional plan at grades K to 5. And I will admit, I probably have said this when I've talked before about this, there's never been a year as challenging as this, and I'm sure that's an understatement. And people who are living with COVID right now have by greater challenges than we have. who are living with COVID right now have by greater challenges than we have. So, um, I would never want to minimize some of the things that people are going through related to COVID. But this has really impacted our school district this year. And let me try to paint a picture using some numbers right now. On October 1st, the Board of Education approved our K to 5 and K12 CLP going back to face-to-face instruction in a hybrid plan. And on that day, the seven-day rolling average of cases in our county, Macomb County, that number was 82. On October 12th, when our students began in the hybrid plan, that number had risen to 91. Today, or actually on Friday, the seven-day rolling average of cases in Macomb County has risen to 560. That is, that's, 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 um, a very significant increase. So that's our county. If you look at cases within communities within our county, October for Clinton Township was the second highest number of cases since the pandemic began and numbers were kept in March. And there were 501 cases in Clinton Township. Right now in November, and these numbers are from Friday, the number of cases in Clinton Township are 641. So they've really far surpassed by 20% in less than, less than half of a month what, what the numbers were in October. And it's no different Macomb Township. Macomb Township, for a Macomb Township, October was the highest month with 588 cases. And right now, through last Friday, there are 735 cases in Macomb Township. And I guess if you, uh, think about this and kind of figure out the rest of the month, you might come up with a number of what it's gonna be like by the end of the month. And I'm not sure you can really do that, because these numbers aren't going up on a consistent trajectory, they're really straight up. So there's a chance, and I don't think it's out of, out of the question, that by the end of October, by the end of November in Macomb Township, we will have four times the cases that we have in October. And that's the same in Clinton Township. So what those numbers indicate is, is that COVID is, is spreading in our community. The positivity rate, I remember back in, and you, it's, it's harder to go back and get the positivity rates on the, the charts that are provided through the Macomb County Health Department. But the positivity rate, I remember about mid-September dropping below 5%. It's now 17%. These are, these are put into categories, and that category now is category D, the highest you can be is E, and there are six categories. Our cases per million in, in the county, your category E, which is the, the category you don't want to be in, the highest category for number of, um, cases per million, is anything over 150. And as I said earlier, our seven-day rolling average right now in, in, in Macomb County is 560. These numbers, um, really don't bode well for bringing people together. Now, having said all that, because I know there's gonna be a lot of disappointed people in our community if, if this motion passes later on. But having said all that, um, I really think as a school district, we've done well. We've done well because we have a good plan. Many of our buildings did very well. The cases were minimal. The, the, and that's amongst both staff and students. Other buildings didn't fare quite as well. But I'm, I'm sure you can point to anything why that happens, you just don't know, it's just the way COVID moves. So we've had both cases with both students and staff, and we've been able to manage the impact of positive cases in quarantines. Although, it's not always possible to handle things in a traditional manner, and I'll give an example of that. Normally, if we have a staff member who's out, we have a substitute teacher. They're in short supply these days. So in order to cover a teacher when they're out, we may have to take teachers who aren't teaching at that moment and then have them, have them cover in the classroom. So a teacher in a classroom might have six different teachers in, or five, five different teachers in the day. So, some days we can manage that. But we're really concerned about the direction this is headed. And that, those types of things and high numbers can make this completely unmanageable. Not only do we want our students and our staff to be safe, but if, we need to manage our buildings, and that, and as I said, that can become difficult. Now, it's just not those numbers right there. It's all, there are also factors right now which complicate this. And they complicate it in a way that we're not quite sure what that will look like, but it would not be positive. For example, we were, we were told by many who understand, um, COVID, that, that Halloween would bring a spike. And I must say, I sometimes think, well, what would that look like? Because Halloween is something people go and do outside, but I guess they take into fact, into account people have Halloween parties and things like that. Our district did see a spike after Halloween, and it takes a while for that spike to happen. We have two district nurses who work on this. One always full-time, the other part-time. So we're really quite aware, we understand what's going on in our district, we know where the cases are, the quarantines are. We really understand the picture in our district. So you take Halloween, and then you have this spike. We have things coming forward that can create the same type of spike, only has potential to make it greater. Any, any event that brings people together will do this. So looking forward, we have Thanksgiving, we have Christmas, we have Hanukkah, we have Kwanzaa, we have New Year's Eve. These are all activities in which people come together. We have a critical situation right now that will only contribute to that. We don't want to be in a position of having to make a decision when we realize we have a critical problem. So considering all of this, administration, me as superintendent, is recommending this evening to the board that we return K5 and K12, the Creative Learning Program, to Remote Effective next Monday, November 23rd. Also in the motion is a target date to return to hybrid on January 23rd, 2021. So, after hearing that and thinking about the governor's order last night, or the Department of Health and Human Services order, which, um, which actually put high school out until through December 8th, why not, why not choose an earlier date? Well, th- this, this was discussed, um, for quite some time administratively in our district. And these were the factors for that. There is no indication that the case numbers will begin to decline anytime soon. The trajectory is straight up. I think it will continue to go straight up until the, until the safety protocols which were put into place last night have a chance to take effect. That's weeks out. So this, coupled with celebrations, which could make it worse, led to the date of the January date. I think it's important that we set these dates, which bring continuity to our program, to, on a hope and a prayer, put on an earlier date, it just creates angst in our district. Parents need to make plans, teachers need to make plans. So for those reasons, it was, the, the date in January was selected. I want our community to know, and I know we'll have people who will wish this was not the decision. Just, I want you to understand the difficulty of these decisions. In the last 10 days, I have visited almost every building in the district as students arrived at school. And I did that because I wanted to talk to people. So I stood outside as the buses pulled up and the cars came in and parents got out and walked their kids to the door, and I just had an opportunity to talk to parents. I heard nothing but appreciation for us being in the hybrid plan. They understood the difficulty of the situation, and of course, everyone wants their child in full-time, face-to-face. But they understood that wasn't a reasonable thing to expect right now. But they expressed so much appreciation to me as a representative of the, of this district that had their students in for hybrid. I talked to parents who were trying to manage work schedules, who knew if their children were in a remote setting, they were going to have to carve out extra time to be there. And the younger the child, the truer that was. I talked to students, and as excited as students get for a snow day, these kids were excited to be in school. It meant something to them. So, that's what makes this decision so difficult to make. Is that we know that our families need the kids to be in school, their children, and children need to be in school. So, it makes it really difficult when you cannot do what a sizable segment of your community would like you to do. It's just not the time right now. Being in school is a community effort. We all have a responsibility. If we want our kids in school, there are certain things we can all do. We need to pull together to do those things. We need to drive this down in our community so our kids can be in school. That needs to be our collective goal. And the three Ws is what you constantly hear about. Wear a mask, watch your distance, and wash your hands. Those are the things that we need to do, that's all we can do, that's it. That's all we can do, we can't do anything else. That's all, all we can do to drive down the trend right now. There is nothing, nothing this year has frustrated me more than our inability to deliver for our community. But it is a collective effort. And I think that we can do it, we have to do it. Because the end goal is the same for all of us. So as difficult it is to make this recommendation this evening, I know it is the right thing to do. And with that, I just want to thank our community for their patience. We, we will have a consistent next eight weeks. If you look at it this way, this is probably a two-month period which on the calendar has the fewest number of days in school with all the breaks that we have between now and then, so we need to, to do what we can to make the situation better so that we can get our kids back in school. So with that, um, thank you, Mr. Benard, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roberts. Okay, uh, just a little bit of housekeeping, uh, this evening. I need to mention that we have three board members who are attending remotely because of, uh, uh, circumstances they have. Ms. DeMigzak is, um, watching and participating in this meeting from, from a location in Macomb County and Macomb Township. Mr. Soba is, uh, attending and watching, participating, uh, from Macomb County Clinton Township. And Ms. Cardamone is, uh, participating, uh, virtually this evening also from Clinton Township, so I want to put that on the record. Okay, we move on to D, general consent agenda, can we have a motion to pass the general consent agenda, please? Yes, Ms., move by Ms. Aquino. Support by Mr. Patterson. Is there anything that, uh, any board member would like to have removed or discussed further?
Yeah, I need a correction to the minutes.
Okay, Ms. DeMigzak, go ahead.
Uh, motion 11-5, I voted against that motion.
All right, say them, we have to notate that for correction, okay, so noted, Ms. DeMigzak, thank you. All right, any other comments, questions regarding consent agenda this evening? Okay, hearing none, uh, can we have a roll call vote, Ms. Cardamone, please?
Ms. Aquino? Mr. Benard? I'm sorry, Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Benard?
Yes.
Cardamone, yes. Mr. DeMigzak?
Yes.
Ms. Pyden?
Yes.
Mr. Soba?
Yes.
Motion carries. And we have, we do have a retirement read into, resolution to read into the record.
Yes.
The resolution reads, whereas Susan Phelps has served the Chippewa Valley School District faithfully and diligently for a period of 31 years as a teacher. Whereas Susan Phelps, through her leadership, has had a positive impact on the staff, students, and the community. Whereas Susan Phelps, a conscientious, loyal, hard-working employee, has elected to retire. And whereas Susan Phelps will be missed by all of her school colleagues. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Chippewa Valley School District, not only on their behalf, but also that of the superintendent of schools and the administration, extend our thanks and appreciation for a job well done, as well as best wishes for the future. Be it further resolved that this resolution, having been adopted by the Board of Education of the Chippewa Valley School District on the 16th day of November, 2020, made a permanent part of the records of the school district and a copy sent to Susan Phelps as an expression of our appreciation.
Okay, well, congratulations to Ms. Mrs. Phelps on her retirement, we wish her best of luck. All right, at this point, we'll move on to E from the community, just a couple of things before we get started. My community members, we have put a few here to this evening who want to speak and make comments to the board. Oh, yeah, we can check that real quick. Do we have any of the new hires with us this evening, Mr. Roberts?
No.
Okay. Okay, very good. All right, uh, anyway, so before we start public, uh, comment this evening on the board, I just wanted to run through the, the, uh, rules for public comment, as we always do prior to starting, a summary of those real quick. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to a five-minute duration, as always, uh, I'll give you like a one-minute warning so you can wrap it up. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer, no person may address or question board members individually. Complaints against identifiable school personnel may not be expressed in an open meeting. Such complaint should first be submitted and running to the board and aired in open or closed session according to the wish of the persons involved. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participates, participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Presiding officer may request any individual to leave the meeting, and that person does not observe reasonable decorum. Call, the presiding officer may call for recess or adjournment to another time when the lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting as to warrant such action. The presiding officer may waive these rules with the approval of the board when necessary for protection of privacy or the administration of the board's business. So, um, just a few housekeeping rules there. Uh, again, this is just a comments section where our community members can come on and, and speak to the board and tell them what their thoughts are. It's not a question and answer or anything like that. It's just strictly just comments. And we've had a real, a lengthy time these last months because of the pandemic. But we, we've really had a, uh, the community's been very respectful in their comments and, and the board, I know, we all appreciate that greatly. We're trying to, um, just hear what you have to say so we can take those comments into voting with us. All right, with that, um, Mrs. Monier White, do we have our parents standing by? Could you go ahead and bring the first one up and I will confirm that we, we can hear.
Our first speaker is Mark Kincher.
Okay, Mark.
Unmute Mr. Kincher.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Kincher, we can hear you loud and clear. Please, uh, share your comments with the board.
Okay, good evening, um, and thank you. I'm grateful for the opportunity that I get to voice my opinion. Um, I have been attending these meetings and feel that I needed to voice my opinion in this one. I have four daughters, um, two in elementary and one in middle school, and a wife who is a substitute teacher in the district. Uh, COVID has been a very difficult thing for our family, and about a month before the shutdown in March, I was laid off from my job from a major supplier in automotive industry. Two days before the students were sent home, my wife had completed everything she needed to be a substitute teacher to help supplement our income, and had started teaching in the district, and it shut down, um, which I understand at the time was necessary. It's been very difficult to, for us, but the, but the return to school has made things easier. Uh, my concerns with the current trend in the state and the neighboring districts, the board is considering shutting down the elementary schools and returning to virtual learning. I understand that concern with middle school and high school, and this was even backed by the stats given by the state yesterday. If they would have broken it down even further, um, I, between middle school and elementary, I believe that most of the numbers would have been from middle school sports teams. Uh, I have a daughter that plays and missed a few games because of that. But I plead with you guys not to return to the virtual learning for the elementary students. Have you guys ever considered why a member of the board with school-aged children, elementary school-aged children, has always voted to keep them in school? In my brief research, she is the only one with elementary-aged children. I'm grateful for her, and I applaud her leadership. I applaud the, the community members and the parents who recently voted to change this. Really ponder why she has voted this way. Does she not love her kids? Does she need them to be in school to have more free time? I know that is not the case. She loves her children, and that is why she has voted to keep them in school. I, I share this feeling. Uh, sorry. I share this feeling along with many other parents in the district who did not choose CBVA. We did not choose CBVA. We wanted them in person. We knew that there would be some COVID cases, and there has been. But the district and the schools have done a great job to minimize them. These young minds need to be in school. They learn better in the classroom. Two or three days in person accomplishes way more than five days in virtual, in my opinion. My wife spent her days teaching in the district, helping other kids. Am I concerned? Yes, but I know she is doing the right thing. Elementary students in this district deserve to be in school. I do my best with our kids, but I am not a teacher. Being together all day is not healthy for any of us. Before we returned, I would sit between my first and third grader with one headphone from each class, listening for key words and helping them navigate so they didn't take up the teacher's time and other students by asking unneeded questions. Not all the students have someone with them to help them. Lots of the time was taken up by students in lower grades asking if they were almost done, if they could go to the bathroom or when lunch or the next break was. During this time helping these two, my three-year-old would sometimes have to fend for herself, wondering why she couldn't be on the computer, phone, or watch TV like her sisters were doing. She would be neglected and was not getting her own quality time due to the, the amount of time that was needed for her, her sisters doing virtual. I know that other parents have felt the same way about younger kids. The kids in school aren't the only ones suffer, suffering. Future Chippewa Valley students are suffering too. When I would help my three-year-old, I would sometimes find my fifth grader, my first grader, out on her five-minute break out of her classroom, even though it had already started, because to her, five minutes was a long time. My kids would complain about how long virtual days were. My kids are much happier going to school and calm and excited to tell us about their day. They don't complain about wearing masks. They understand why they need to wear them. They ask why their friends in the area get to go to school all day, every day. Please let these kids stay in person. They need to be with their teachers. They need to see their friends, be with them. Their teachers want the kids to be in person.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kincher. Thank you so much for your comments this evening, Mr. Kincher. Okay, Ms.
Our next speaker this evening is Becky Huskin.
Hello, Becky. Hello, Ms. Huskin.
A star six will unmute you in the call.
Hi, can you hear me? I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Ms. Huskin, we can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, great.
Participating, please, uh, share your comments with the board.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for allowing me the time to talk today during this meeting. Thank you to Superintendent Ron Roberts for objectively using the most recent and relevant community data and statistics when making recommendations to the board. I truly believe you all want what's best for the students. I have two children in the district, one in fourth grade and one in sixth grade. This year has been very difficult. At the start of the school year, I didn't know how remote learning was going to go. But honestly, it was great. The kids were getting direct, remote instruction daily. The teachers were doing an amazing job. I appreciate everything they have been doing. For elementary, I do appreciate the district's hybrid learning plan because students are able to social distance and interact with the teacher. But the hybrid model is not ideal. We went from five days of direct instruction to two to three days per week. On average, my son finishes his off-day work by 10:30 or 11 o'clock in the morning. However, at this point, my elementary student's teacher is currently quarantined and is teaching remote. I wish there was an option to have our students log in remotely on their actual school day from home in these situations. My son does not physically need to be in school when his teacher is not there. The relationship factor is huge. He loves his teacher, and she is great. I also understand why it is so difficult to get face-to-face instruction at the secondary level, because I am also in education. I used to work on scheduling. I get it. I'm sad that my sixth grader wasn't able to have a normal start to his middle school year. We have adapted, and once again, the teachers are great, and it is going well. This year has been a hard year for our students. For those people that are worried about the social, emotional learning of their child, talk to your kid. Teach them something new. Spend quality time with them. Ask them how they are feeling about things. I can tell you, my elementary student has had a ton of anxiety this year. It has been a struggle getting him to go in person. Remote learning exceeded our expectations with the explosion of positive COVID cases in our community. I wish the district would resurvey the parents and see if they would possibly choose a different learning path to potentially open up the virtual academy. This year is the year of flexibility. It is not like any other year. We all need to sacrifice a little and be more flexible so that we can get back to normal times. Our kids need consistency. With the rising cases, I believe the district should go back to full remote. As Mr. Roberts had said, the Macomb County seven-day average percent positive was at 16.7% earlier today, and that number is based on data through November 11th, which was five days ago. For those parents that say the virus is not affecting the younger students, I disagree. There have been students quarantined in my son's class. Also, now his teacher is quarantined. We also heard about staff having to quarantine while they were working remote in school. While there may not be cases in our school, the virus is certainly affecting the staff and students. The parents that are complaining about wanting in-school learning are also the families who are gathering in person with others. They are not social distancing. Until our community proves they are taking the virus seriously and our numbers decline substantially, we shouldn't be sending our children to school. Finally, you need to know the teachers and staff are doing an amazing job. It is an extremely difficult year for them. They are doing multiple jobs at once, constantly adjusting plans, learning new techniques, adapting to the needs of their students, all while working in an extremely stressful environment. The district should consider allowing teachers and staff to work remotely from home. The teachers are professionals who are struggling right now, too. Give them the option. If they can do their job at home, let them. If a teacher isn't meeting expectations, then deal with that particular teacher. Let's help them during this time. My friends, who also have professional jobs, are currently working remotely. Why can't the teachers? I know the situation is not ideal, but we are in the middle of an unprecedented global pandemic, and our community's numbers continue to skyrocket. Teachers didn't choose this, nor do they have control over this. The majority of the cases.
Ms. Huskin, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just want to give you a one-minute warning. Please continue.
Okay, thank you. The majority of the cases in our district are staff members. They are putting themselves at risk for the sake of our children. People need to stop saying teachers are lazy and don't want to work. That is not the case. Teachers are working harder than they have before and doing more. We are mentally and emotionally drained. Remember, in the beginning of the pandemic last school year, when people were kind to one another and praised the teachers? Let's go back to that time. People have no idea what others are dealing with during this time and how hard it is on all of us. Again, thank you very much for letting me speak tonight, and I really appreciated what Mr. Roberts had to say earlier this meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Huskin, for your comments. I just want to, uh, make a comment to the community as you speak this evening to the board. We're not to use any kind of identifiable names, so if you are wanting to speak about Mr. Roberts, you could simply refer to him as the superintendent, the superintendent, not Mr. Roberts, for the benefit of the record. Thank you. Okay, uh, Ms. Monier White?
Kimberly Sluck is our next community member.
I'm sorry?
Kimberly Sluck is next on our speaker list.
Oh, okay.
Hello?
Hello, Mrs. Sluck. We can hear you loud and clear. Please share your comments with the board.
Thank you. Um, hello, my name is Kim Sluck, and I'm a parent of a fifth grader at Mohawk and a seventh grader at Iroquois. I'm also a teacher, and I've been teaching for 25 years in another district. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. The district that I work at, um, right now is in Macomb County, and they just voted for virtual K-12 last week. As a staff member and many of my teacher colleagues, we were very happy that this happened. There is so much, the numbers of COVID cases here in Macomb are on the rise, and hospitals are becoming full once again. This weekend, I received that dreaded call that my son's class was quarantined for 14 days. My heart dropped, as any other parent might, might feel that way. I chose face-to-face instruction because I believe that the board would look at the rising cases and make the right call when to suspend face-to-face learning. Well, that time is now. I applaud all the teachers and staff in Chippewa for doing their best to keep these students safe. But with so many quarantined classes and teachers, the inconsistency is not good for these students. Our students need to feel safe and to have instruction on a daily basis. I know this might be inconvenient for some, but as the governor stated this weekend, it's not forever. Again, the numbers do not lie. The cases are rising, and we need to keep our students and staff safe. Again, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Sluck, for your comments this evening. Okay, Ms. Monier White?
Angela Burry is our next community member to speak.
What, what's the last name? Oh, Angela.
Burry, Angela Burry, yeah.
Hello, Ms. Burry? Hello, Ms. Burry? Hello, Ms. Burry? Angela Burry?
Looks like she might be having a hard time unmuting. Would you like to go to the next speaker and come back to Ms. Burry?
That'd be fine, yeah.
So we have Kelly Giannotti would like to speak.
Hey, um, I'll start by just giving a little background information about myself. Um, I'm a third-grade teacher at Ottawa. I attended Chippewa all of my school career, and I got a job in Chippewa right out of college. Uh, I have a master's degree in learning and technology. I have a one-year-old and a two-year-old that go to daycare three days a week. And my mom had a double lung transplant three years ago. The reason I give you this information is because I want you to be able to see this from my point of view of it. Despite all of that, despite having my master's in learning and technology, uh, despite having babies, despite having a mom who's vulnerable and immunocompromised, I don't think we need to transition to remote learning. I know this virus is real. I understand that it's scary and can have and has had a lasting impact on individuals and families. However, I also understand that a lack of a good education can have and has had a lasting impact on individuals and families. A good education and a solid relationship with a teacher or support, support person is so important. Our young children need a teacher physically in front of them to see what they're struggling with, to watch when they finally have that lightbulb moment, to let them see that we too make mistakes, to notice when there's an emotional, emotional problem going on behind the scenes, to look for physical abuse, to help them learn how to socialize, to offer a snack when they need it, to do our best teaching and to allow students the best opportunity to learn. I struggled to find a babysitter one day this week for my children, one day. It stressed me out 24/7 until I could figure it out, and now we're contemplating putting families back in this predicament day after day again. We cannot keep making families go through this. Please don't come back with the argument that teachers aren't babysitters. I know I'm more than a babysitter, but I don't mind being the responsible adult for my students, just like I don't mind being their nurse, their counselor, their confident, or their role model. Families need us. I am an educator because I like helping others. Please let us help them. We have been doing a great job with the safety protocols that are in place. The children know that this is serious, and that if they want to stay in school, they must follow the rules. And let me tell you, they are doing a fantastic job. I have asked my students on multiple occasions if they'd rather stay hybrid or go back to remote learning, and it has always been a unanimous vote for hybrid. These kids want to be in school. They sanitize and wash their hands. They wear their masks without complaining, and they help wipe down desks at the, at the end of the day. Everything is working. Are there some students, a few teachers, in a handful of classrooms that have had to quarantine? Of course. In my opinion, that's expected. Here are some data points gathered by our union via survey sent to elementary teachers. Thirteen classes have been quarantined since we started hybrid. That's out of roughly 150 to 200 classes that are in hybrid mode right now. In addition, only 60 students have tested positive out of roughly 6,000 students at the elementary level. That's 1% or a little over 1%. Do these numbers mean we need to shut down in-person learning for everyone? I don't think so. It's inconvenient and a bit annoying when one class or one student or one teacher has to quarantine. I get that. But having a small percentage of us learn remotely for two weeks is a much better situation than sending 6,000 kids home to learn remotely for an, well, undetermined or to January 23rd. Virtual learning isn't ideal for these young kids. Sending all of our elementary students to learn from home is a disservice to them. I fully understand the concern over sub-sortages if and when teachers need to quarantine. However, I don't find that to be a rational reason to discontinue in-person learning. I don't have a good solution either, other than encouraging our community to step up and fill these voids when possible. I know the technology department has been working their butts off to provide us and our community with everything we need to be successful for remote learning. I'm so appreciative of everything they've done to make virtual learning a plausible option. However, it just doesn't work the way it should for our young children.
Ms. Giannotti, I'm sorry, Ms. Giannotti, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Just wanted to give you that one, one-minute warning. Please continue.
Thank you. Um, it's just not working. There, we waste time trying to help individual students troubleshoot technology problems. Uh, not to toot my own horn, but I'm well-versed in technology. I know how to solve problems, and I know how to simultaneously use everything, and I still can't create the best teaching environment for my students. It doesn't compare to having them in front of me. Imagine some of these teachers who are not so tech-savvy, doing their very best to teach remotely, and despite their best efforts, I can guarantee their students are not getting the quality education that they deserve. I fear that returning to remote instruction will disrupt the progress we've made with struggling students. We've been able to motivate students and encourage them by being in person. Sending them back home will be detrimental to their motivation and education. To conclude, I want my administration, our board, and my community to know that I do not feel less valued by our district because I'm required to teach in person. I am not in the majority that wants to be remote at this time. I urge you to allow us to continue doing what's working. With other things closed for the next three weeks, I suspect that we will see a decline in cases and quarantines. Let's remain in the hybrid model during this three-week period to see how things go. Let's remain in the hybrid model during this three-week period to see how things go. Face-to-face instruction is essential at this age. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giannati, for your comments this evening. Okay, Ms. Monier White, another community member?
Board members, if you're following the list, I apologize. I'm jumping around a little bit tonight. Our next speaker is Anna Noonar. If you could use star six to unmute, please.
Say, what's the name, sir?
Anna Noonar.
Oh, Ms. Noonar? Hello, Ms. Noonar?
Can you hear me?
Hello, Ms. Noonar. Yes, we can hear you loud and clear. Please share your comments with the board.
All right, good evening. I feel like I've been doing this handful of times at this point. So I want to give a little background of myself. I'm a parent of three children in the district, two high schoolers, and a second grader. I'm also a pediatric nurse at a local hospital. Today's pediatric count with COVID, positive COVID, is two. Two. Kids are in a routine. They truly enjoy going to school, even if it's a few days a week. My second grader looks forward to those days. He doesn't care if he wears a mask. He doesn't mind that he has to sit apart from somebody else. He just truly enjoys going. They get the individualized attention. The classes are smaller. They get the individualized attention that they need, and they're actually retaining information. He came home today and just, you know, gives facts that he learned. I learned this today in school, things that I can't provide for him because I don't go to school to be a teacher. And having us parents do the majority of the teaching is really almost like a slap in the face to the teachers who spent all these years perfecting and getting it all right for them to do the best job that they can. We are not teachers. The biggest concern when originally we were going to go hybrid was the teachers and support staff were scared of catching COVID from the outside or from the students, and ultimately it's becoming that they're catching COVID from outside, not from the students. It appears that this is not the case. Teachers are contacting it from the outside, just like everyone else is. So what is the difference that we have to close it down? They're not getting it from the kids. The kids are staying healthy. It's going to be no different if they, the teachers are teaching from home, going out and doing the same thing. The risk is the same, but the biggest downfall is these kids are losing out on our education. CBS has a lot of technology. We have had a teacher in my son's school who had to quarantine. She taught from home via Zoom. There was a sub in the classroom from what my son told me, but the teachers still did the teaching. So even if they have to quarantine and there's adjustments, they can make it work. We have to kind of use all the resources that we have. Our youngest have already lost so many months of education, months that are hard to get back. There's no way parents can make up for all this loss, especially the younger grades. These are the foundational building blocks of their education, reading, comprehension, writing. We did not go to school to be teachers once again. And if the elementary are forced to go virtual, the kids will slide back even further. I can only imagine that during all this, much thought hasn't been given on how to catch these kids up. Ultimately, they'll be pushed on with missing pieces, things that, how do you make that up down the road? Please give us serious thought. I know many, including our own family, we've had to reach out and, you know, pay for outside tutoring and utilize other resources to try to make it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noonar, for your comments this evening to the board. Okay, Ms. Monier White, we have another community member?
Our next community member is Christine Tankersley.
Kristen?
Tankersley?
Ms. Tankersley?
Hi, hello?
Hi, Ms. Tankersley. We can hear you loud and clear. Please share your comments with the board.
Hi, I'm sorry. I just was at it today. I was calling, and I am a parent of six children in the district. I have three in the high school, two at YN.Middle School, and one son over at Huron Elementary School. And my comment is, I was, my children, I had expected for my children to go back face-to-face, and then we had a COVID scare. There are 10 of us in my home, myself, my husband, and we have eight kids, two that are home from college as well. And we had a college student and a high schooler come by just to play ball in the driveway, and two days later, one of them tested positive, and we had to quarantine, and my husband and my youngest son was exposed. And so as a mother, I know how difficult that was, especially with so many people being in our home, and how scary it was for us. And so I just wanted to, I don't want to say thank you guys, but I just, I trust that the decisions that you guys are making for these students are the best. And I also wanted to give a shout-out, kudos, I'm sorry, to the teachers that are doing the online, the virtual instruction, the remote instruction. They are doing a fantastic job with keeping the children engaged and just trying their best to do, you know, whatever activities and things that they can do to keep the kids focused on learning, and I just wanted to commend them for that, especially with me having so many kids in the district. I was afraid that with them going virtual after the COVID scare that we had, that it was going to be difficult for them to, you know, get on track and stay in on track with everything. So I just wanted to add that because I know that there's a lot going on, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments, Ms. Tankersley, this evening. Ms. Monier White?
All right, thank you.
Angela Conrad is our next community member to speak.
Hello, Ms. Conrad? Hi, Ms. Conrad. We can hear you loud and clear. Please share your comments with the board.
Perfect, thank you. I am speaking tonight as both an elementary teacher and as a parent of a middle school student in the district. My focus tonight is going to be on the continuation of the elementary hybrid model of instruction. I'm not going to take up the time to speak, obviously, about the middle schools not returning. That ship has already sailed. We all know the pandemic has been stressful, and if you've spent the endless hours listening or attending the board meetings like I have, then you already know that the board members are in a high-pressure position, and no matter what the outcome is, unfortunately, it's never going to make all of the parties involved happy. I want to thank the board members, Superintendent Mr. Ron Roberts, and so many others that are never mentioned for the amount of time that they have all invested in making what they consider to be the right choices for our school district. With that being said, I'm speaking tonight because I have listened to these meetings, and I seem to only be hearing a lot of one-sided views coming from educators. And I refuse to have the community think that this is how all educators are feeling. As I can only speak for myself, I can assure you that I am not alone in wanting to continue the hybrid model of teaching in the Chippewa Valley School District. I would like to quote what Governor Whitmer stated yesterday during her press conference, and she said that in-person K-8 schooling may continue if it's done with strong mitigation, including mask requirements, based on discussion between local health and school officials. When I heard that statement, I was completely relieved because that is exactly what our school district has been doing. I feel like we've been doing a phenomenal job with what she had said. The class sizes are cut in half. Students are seated far enough apart to follow social distancing guidelines. School traffic is all one-way throughout the buildings. Students are spaced out in lunchrooms. We're all washing and sanitizing our hands regularly. We're all wearing masks, and we're enforcing mask-wearing. We are all doing our part. Following all of the guidelines has proven that we are safe within our buildings, and we can still educate our students. The number of positive cases in comparison to the students, at least in our building, has been minimal. Most cases in elementary buildings have come from outside gatherings, and unfortunately, they have had to quarantine at home. These are all safe practices that we are following according to the Macomb County Health Department, and we're all doing this for one reason, and that's because we care about the education of our students. All students also refers to the population of students that some of us are not even aware of because it doesn't directly affect them. While it does affect most educators, and we understand that there's a population of students that depend on school more than on education, which during virtual instruction they aren't getting at home either. They come to school to learn, but they come to be fed, to be loved, to be heard, to be seen, and when a decision is made to teach from a virtual learning platform, much more than building district and state test scores are affected. How is it fair that these students have to sacrifice their opportunity of an equal education? It's not. And how is it fair to ask kids to sacrifice their social, emotional growth for a virus that the district thus far has kept under control? It's not. The achievement gap that we as educators have worked on-
Ms. Conrad, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to give you a one-minute warning if you want to-
Thank you.
Please continue.
The achievement gap that we as educators have worked on closing by changing our practices will nearly be impossible to close since the hybrid learning of October 12th. I feel like I have a completely different class. I see them smile, and they engage with each other, and most importantly, I'm once again seeing them learn. Having them in school two to three days a week in smaller class sizes has shown to be more effective academically than five full days of virtual instruction. I understand that some families are concerned about the increasing numbers in COVID-19 cases, but I am also aware that they were given the opportunity to choose CVVA as an educational platform. Teachers were also given the opportunity to teach virtually. I am a teacher. I'm aware of the risks that COVID-19 poses for my family and I. With that being said, I am more than willing to put myself at risk to give all students the chance of an equal education. Thank you for hearing me tonight, and I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Mrs. Conrad, for your comments this evening. Ms. Monier White?
Sarah Turner is our next community speaker.
Hello, Ms. Turner?
Good evening.
Hi, Ms. Turner. We can hear you loud and clear. Please share your comments with the board.
Good evening. Thank you for your time, and I truly do value the opportunity to speak to the board and administration tonight. Through attending every meeting in these past few months, I can say confidently I have learned so much in this short time about Chippewa Valley School District. Chippewa Valley School District mission is to inspire and empower learners to achieve a lifetime of success. The district's vision is setting the standard for education excellence. As a parent of two children in the district, a first grader and a sixth grader, I have always attested that the district has put in every effort to deliver on both this mission and vision. I earnestly listen at each board meeting to all community comments with a true intent to seek to understand a different perspective than my own when I may not agree. With that consideration, I am asking to please listen to potentially a different perspective than your own and take it into consideration. At the last board meeting, a fellow board member urged the administration to look at options for the virtual academy. Is there an opportunity to open up the virtual academy for parents who do not want their children to return to school? If this opportunity presents itself again, hopefully, many more parents would opt into it and therefore alleviate some of those who are now feeling even more uncomfortable with the possibility that their children have to go into a classroom. I do not fall into that category, but I do believe in finding a win-win or something close. Secondly, and importantly, I am a proponent of elementary school to remain hybrid with the safety protocols in place. Masking up, limited class sizes, and limited days of in-person instruction, as this is the best learning model for young children. It is an unpopular preference to stay hybrid in person, but it is the best for young learners to grow in their education and for the district to deliver on their mission and vision. I would point out, the new order effective tomorrow does not order remote instruction for K-8, which leaves the decision up to you to remain hybrid. My son, our first grader, is thriving with hybrid instruction, having the opportunity to be in person a few days a week with his teacher in limited class size. When I think back to the start of the school year, despite the enormous effort and patience, and I cannot reiterate that enough, of his teachers through these first graders did not have the engagement level to sit at a computer for a minimum of four hours a day, even with breaks. Furthermore, at-home remote learning requires an adult to be right next to them to navigate through the school day five days a week. Please take the following observations into consideration of a first-grade remote learning from earlier this year as you weigh your decision. Number one, constant interruption from the children during instruction. I do not fault these children in any way as their lives have been turned upside down and they are simply craving attention. However, due to these interruptions, learning was severely hindered for the class and limited their growth. Two, children not having the correct material because they are not at home and are with their caretakers, which leads to an immense amount of anxiety for the child. Three, caretakers and grandparents unable to navigate the technology to help the children with remote learning, resulting in several interruptions and questions during instruction. And lastly, an immense amount of frustration among children after an hour and a half of remote learning through a computer. And yes, this does include breaks because they simply do not have the engagement and patience to sit at a computer for longer than 20 minutes to learn. Please do not think a break is helpful as it creates more frustration. They have to come back to a device to sit and learn and focus again. These are observations that occur day after day in remote learning with first graders. Please ask yourself if you believe these children are growing to grow in learning, and it will be an effective environment for them. COVID is not going away. How long are we going to keep these children outside of the classroom that will severely impact their learning? How is the district going to deliver on the mission and vision? Lastly, this is probably the most difficult decision to make, and I cannot imagine the stress it has on someone's shoulders. I do have hope that one day we will get through this and come back together as a community. Please stay safe, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Mrs. Turner, for your comments this evening. Okay, Ms. Monier White, we have another community member who wants to speak to the board?
Breon Zilke Stano is our next speaker.
Hello?
Ms. Zilke Stano?
Yes.
Hi, we can hear you loud and clear. Please address the board.
Okay, I just wanted to address the board tonight about something a little different than whether or not to close or not. I basically wanted to ask that if we do close the K-5, that you would consider shorter virtual days? You have the kids at home, sitting there staring at the screen for the six hours. I have three kids, one's in high school and two in elementary, and last time we were virtual, I had to set my alarm on my phone for 12 different alarms for each day. So my kids, you know, for when their classes began, when they started and stopped, the specials, the breaks, the independent group work, it was just, it's just too much. And my kids liked less screen time and more hands-on work at home. I also had one more thing that I wanted to ask, if possible. I know that lunch and recess times are set depending on the grades and the teachers, but I ask that if you can make the times the same for the whole school during remote learning. I know that they're set that way to keep normal for when the kids come back to school, but nothing's really normal right now anyways, and it would just make it a little easier for the parents at home if our kids were eating lunch together and had the same recesses, and then we could eat lunch with them. So just two things in case we close, I just thought would be a good idea, but thank you guys for all that you do.
Thank you very much for your comments this evening. Okay, Ms. Monier White, we have another community member wanting to speak to the board?
Let's go back to Angela Burry. She is still in the call. Hopefully, we can get her to unmute.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello, Ms. Burry?
Yes.
Hi, we can hear you loud and clear. Please share your comments with the board.
I would like to thank the Board of Education and the Chippewa Valley Administration and staff for allowing me to express my thoughts here this evening. As a kindergarten teacher in a neighboring district, I know firsthand how difficult these decisions are to make and how frustrating it can be to know what the right decision is. I appreciate the situation that you are being put in as a result of this awful illness. That being said, I respectfully request to pull back the elementary school children to remote learning for the foreseeable future. In my own children's school, we have already had five cases of coronavirus, and one of my own children was already put through a two-week quarantine along with her teachers, who then had to teach from home for two weeks while some of their students were attending school. With five cases in our school alone and cases rising exponentially throughout the state, I feel like this will continue to happen if we stay open, even with a hybrid schedule. Every time a child comes to school unknowingly with the coronavirus, they stand to pass it on to another child, who in turn brings it- they stand to pass it on to another child, who in turn brings it back home to their family, and then the spread continues if family members go to work and continue to live their lives. By the time they have symptoms, they've already potentially spread germs and infected other people, which is why our numbers continue to climb instead of drop. If you look at the coronavirus numbers and data, you will notice the sharp climb of cases as schools returned. Many districts, including the one that I work for, have already gone back to a remote schedule. If COVID-19 spirals out of control, our children are not protected, while the children who get to learn from home are. As a teacher, I was reminded when we pulled back from our hybrid schedule just how much more education, attention, and learning my students are getting when they are remote, as I see them and connect with them every day of the week instead of just two to three days. And being that they are the youngest learners, one would think they would have the most difficulty going back and forth, but children are resilient, and they made the transition beautifully. We miss one another, but they look forward to our sessions every day, and I feel like they are getting so much more this way. I know there's a huge concern about children getting social interaction, and I recognize that concern from a developmental standpoint. What concerns me more is the amount of people who are dying from this disease or living with horrible side effects. If there is something we can do to combat that, we should. Teachers are providing wonderful online social interaction and learning, and as parents, that's something we can easily implement ourselves. Before the days of the internet, people spent a lot more time playing with their children. Going back to that has been a positive for our family that has come out of all of this and balances out the losses that we have experienced due to COVID-19, including losing a close family member. This is an unprecedented illness and it calls for unprecedented solutions. And the long one, missing a few months of school to save lives, is a small thing to ask. If we are truly in the business of doing what is best for students, then it is my belief that we need to let them learn from home for the time being effective immediately. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Burry, uh, for your comments this evening. Ms. Monier White, do we have another community member who wishes to speak?
That was our final community member in the call to- this evening.
What's the name, Ms. White?
I apologize, um, Ms. Burry was our last speaker in the call. I know we had several other people on the list, but they did not join us.
Okay, Ms. Burry, you say?
That's who just finished, we're all set. We're all done with community comments for the evening.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, I know, I'm not hearing real well. Um, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. White, for, uh, helping us with the community comments. Again, we'd just like to thank all our community members are very emotional, passionate parents and people that care. We really appreciate you making comments to us so that we can hear them as we consider these votes. But, uh, it's always been a respectful time, uh, even though it's been so emotional. And again, we- the board just like to thank our community for so- being so respectful in their comments. Okay, at this time, we will move on to, um, F, old business. We have none this evening. Uh, we'll move on to H, union communication. Do we have any of our union labor leadership that would like to address the board this evening?
We do have Ms. Levine, Levine on the call.
Okay, hello, Ms. Levine?
Hi, yes, um, I would like to urge you to stay remote or to take a pause for the elementary and make sure that all of our students and our staff are safe in this unprecedented time of high COVID cases. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levine. Okay, any other labor leadership that would like to address the board this evening?
I don't believe we have anyone on-
G1 and G2?
Okay. We'll move back to G, new business, my mistake, I jumped to H there. Uh, G, new business, uh, approved resolution to continue summer tax collection for 2021 tax levy. Mr. Sutherland?
Uh, recommended motions that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education-
Thanks, please.
-approve the resolution to continue the 2021 tax levy for the collection of 100% of the levy property taxes with the summer tax levy as initially approved in December 1994 for the 1995 tax levy and continue until revoked, and that the reading of the resolution be waived.
Motion, please. Moved by Ms. Quino?
I'll support, Joe.
Supported by Mr. McZack, rationale, please.
Even though a resolution was adopted by the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education in 1994 to institute a summer tax levy of 100% beginning with the 1995 tax levy and continuing till specifically revoked by Board of Education action, state of Michigan law requires the district reaffirm that decision each year by adopting a resolution to continue the summer tax levy for the next tax year. This action is required to be taken prior to January 1st of the year. The summer tax levy is to be continued. Adoption of the resolution initiates other actions required by law, including requesting the local unit of government to collect the taxes on behalf of the district and negotiating the cost.
Questions or comments by the board? Hearing or seeing none, uh, we'll call a vote, Ms. Cardamone, please.
Ms. Quino? Ms. McZack?
Yes.
Mr. Bednar?
Yes.
Cardamone, yes, Mr. Patzer?
Yes.
Ms. Pyden?
Yes.
Mr. Sova?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to G2, uh, approve return to remote learning grades K through five and grades K through 12 CLP. Mr. Roberts?
Recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve returning students in grades K to five and K-12 CLP to remote learning effective Monday, November 23rd. The target date for return to in-person instruction is Wednesday, January 20th.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pyden?
I'll, uh, I'll support that motion.
Supported by Ms. Quino? Rationale, please.
This is in the interest of safety of both students and staff considering the increase in positive COVID-19 cases in our communities.
Questions, comments by the board? Mr. Patzer?
Yeah, um, uh, Mr. Roberts, how many school days do we have between now and Christmas?
I think we did a count, I don't know that, does someone know that? I know we talked about-
Three weeks or something?
I thought it was 20.
Does anybody know? Guess, guess, give me-
We'll get there. It's either 20 or 22.
22, so. 22 days, huh? Um, how many actual cases do we have of students in our schools? I know the county is spiking, but actually in our school system, I'm wondering how many student cases we actually have?
Oh, boy, Mr. Patzer, I have a sheet, and if I can find it. We had, at the elementary level, let's see. Oh, boy. Darn it, I think the number at the elementary level thus far was 23 students.
How many?
And I'm not sure.
Not sure.
If I, I thought I brought that sheet, but I may not have. But I'm, I'm pretty sure that's it, 23.
We don't know. Okay, so, um, it's not been, that's nothing outrageous or anything that we've been, uh, I haven't received any notices that through the school year that is, you know, spiking in our school system. Is that correct or not?
No, that is correct. In fact, the information that was sent on Friday shows, um, we've actually- it, it varies from building to building, but many buildings have been able to run the hybrid plan with a high degree of success. A few schools have had a more difficult time, which has led to, um, we've had staff members be positive, and that has put their classrooms into hi- into a quarantine. Um, and so that the teacher then, as long as they were well enough during, um, their illness, they taught remotely to those kids. So we've had some of that. Um, we've also, we've had to, you know, um, quarantine different classes. And, and the figure I sent you showed, um, a 2.9% um, rate of quarantine. In other words, 2.9% of our total sections across the district had been quarantined. So, right. So, and so what, what leads us to this point tonight is the fact that we have, um, it's just the way the numbers have gone since opening up, and we see no sign of easing of those numbers.
Okay, so, um, so for myself, um, I'm very concerned about the safety of our children and the health of our children, but also concerned that we're back to school. Then now we're gonna go out of school for 20 days, 30 days, then we're gonna go back to school maybe, and the virus is still gonna be here, and so... I don't know, I don't, I just really concerned about the education of these children. I mean, they're in school, they're out of school. I want to do the right thing for the safety of the staff and the te- and the children, but educationally, it just doesn't seem like this is the most productive process for, for the children's learning. That, that's what I'm struggling with.
And just to, to more accurately answer your first question on the number of days, it's 29 elementary days between 11:23 and 1:19. And then we would have in the week with 1:19, three additional days to end that week, so 32 days.
32 days.
32 instructional days.
I'm just, uh, you know, I'm just struggling with the in-school, the out-of-school, the in-school, maybe in-school, maybe out-of-school more, uh... Nah, it just, uh, it just doesn't seem... This doesn't seem like the greatest way to go to school, I don't know.
I just have a quick question.
Ms. Pyden?
To Andy. Um, so of these 32 days, though, each group will only be in school 16 days?
Or less.
Or less, correct?
13 days because of the hybrid.
Right.
Right.
So for 13 days, 13 days in school-
Are 32 days remote.
Out of 32 days they're in school, 13 days. So going to hy- to virtual for 13 days, disrupting the kid's process of, learning process for 13 days. Nah, I'm struggling with it, Mr. Roberts, I'm struggling with that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, other comments, questions by the board?
Um, I have-
Ms. Quino?
I, I don't really have questions, um, because I truly don't think there's any good answer that's 100% the best answer. Um, I've received and responded to many, many, many emails over the last week. I even took a tally because I had to see. Uh, in the emails that I received, I had, um, 30 people that wanted to go remote and 19 that wanted to go hybrid. Now, this evening, we had speakers and we had, um, nine people that spoke that said they wanted hybrid, I believe, if I tallied correctly. So that tells me our community is almost evenly split between remote and hybrid. So that leads me to say, okay, they're evenly split. I know we're not hearing from everyone, and I understand that. So I try, one of the speakers this evening said that returning was a- to hybrid is an unpopular decision. Every decision we have made over the last eight months or six months, whatever it is, has been unpopular. And very difficult. It is all-consuming, and I'm not complaining. I'm just explaining that at the end of the day, um, and I feel that it all, it gets down to safety for me. Because I feel that I happen to have grandchildren, and I know one of the people here spoke and said that I, you know, one of our members was the only one of our members had elementary children. And yeah, they're not my direct children, but they're my grandchildren, who you love just as much as your children, maybe more in some ways. Um, and I have one that's in the hybrid model, and I have one that's in the remote model. And both of them are doing very well because their family who is at home is supporting whatever they think is best for their child. Even if they don't think it was best, my one child wanted their child in school, but when he was remote, they still did everything they were supposed to do and encouraged my grandson to be fully engaged in whatever classes he was in. So I'm struggling, just like Andy, I'm struggling. However, my biggest struggle, my other struggle is the time of year we're going into, um, the type of environment in our communities and in our nation of, uh, not wanting to make sacrifices for the good of the whole. I guess our country doesn't believe in that, and that's, that's okay, I accept that. But I have to also accept and sleep at night with what I think is important. And so for that reason, I'm gonna support this, even though I'm not sure that it's the right answer. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hope that the, that our community members will stay safe, try not to follow all the guidelines at home, try to help minimize the spread by making the sacrifices necessary, not go, you know, not going to certain places, not engaging, not having huge Thanksgiving dinners. I, I mean, that's really a personal choice, but those kids that you're having dinner with going back in our schools makes me nervous, I'm not gonna lie. So, um, I just wanted to say that, and I don't really have any questions. I was just wanting to kind of like let people understand how I think through these things and that it is, weighs very heavily on us, and each decision is agonizing, and none of them are popular. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other board members, questions, comments?
So, um, so, uh, Ms. Lakari, so in, on the elementary K6, um, at this point, I know it's gonna be a troublesome question, but, uh, I know scheduling is a difficult situation at this time, but is it, are we able to- to take, if we stayed in a modular program, would we be able to move some kids into virtual? Is there space for, uh, us to move kids into virtual if the families choose to do so? Can't hear from you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yeah. You know what, Marina, I'm, I'm gonna ask you to go over to the mic at the center, please, so that our audience can hear that answer. Well, there you go.
Sorry about that.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
So at this time, we do have, I would say, about 40 families that are interested in having their elementary students enter CVVA. We do not have space in the grade levels that those families reflect. However, we have begun to call families that wanted out of CVVA, and the answer has been no when we ask if they want to enter the hybrid model at this time to make space for someone else. They are nervous because of the increase in cases. They are nervous because of the increase in cases.
Frank, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Cardamone.
Does this, the ECSC?
Yes, I'd like to address that. When the board was done with comments, I was gonna make a point about that. Thanks for noticing that. It is not said in the motion, but it should be included. This includes early childhood special education and that's my fault. I was writing faster than I was thinking this afternoon. And I was thinking they were part of K-5 and they're not, they're younger than that. So I'm not sure how you want to address that in this motion, if you just wanna include it so that everyone knows that this does include ECSC.
So we probably need to amend the motion.
Ms. Cardamone, I'm not sure we need to amend it because under IDEA Section 5, ECSC does qualify under K-12 education. Because it's part of one continuous program.
Well, even though the, the motion is specific to K through 5 and K through 15 CLP, you think?
I mean, we, we can amend it, but I, I think we might be okay under IDEA on how that defines ECSC programming.
I think it'll be legal anyway, either way. If someone wants to make a motion to amend, I mean, if you wanna make a motion to amend, I'm sorry, I'm gonna try here. You can do so, I mean, right? Is that right? They can make a motion to amend, correct, Frank?
Yes, we, we can make a motion to amend.
If you, if that's what you choose to do.
Do you, do you need to table the current motion?
No, you just need to amend it.
All right, can I have a motion to amend?
No, no, shouldn't you need it?
All right, move to amend the motion by Ms. Cardamone.
I'll second.
Support by Ms. Piden. Okay. Roll call vote, Ms. Cardamone, please.
Cardamone, yes, Piden?
Yes.
Ms. Aquino?
No.
Mr. Benner?
Yes.
Ms. Deming-Sack?
No.
Patzer?
Yes.
Mr. Sova?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. You know, motion to add to G2, early childhood and ECSC, can I have a motion?
Um, wait, I'm sorry, I would like to jump in here.
Sure.
I would like to help with this amendment because I've made a double mistake. You should not only add ECSC, but add GSRP, the Great Start Readiness Program. My error. So, so it's now that you're amending the motion, then we're gonna add in that also be K-5, K-5 and K-12 CLP, and ECSC.
Okay. Okay, questions, comments?
I do have one other.
Ms. Quino?
Question. So about CLP and the special needs, I know it's challenging for them, more challenging than it is. I know it's challenging for many students anyway, but, so I'm sure you guys probably discussed that today and, and made that decision based on some rationale. Can I just, you know, I just would love to know how you guys.
Well, part of the, the reason they're included is their scheduling is so intertwined with the schedule of, of the, just the K-5.
Okay.
The K-5 program.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you. So I wanted to know. I have a question that's not really related to this, but it is related to expansion of the CVVA. Should I wait until after?
Yeah, that's, they have a motion to, to amend the G2 to add in GSRP and the ECSC. And then we can take further comments once that motion's been corrected.
That's fine, sorry.
Okay. Roll call vote, Ms. Cardamone, please.
You know, I don't even know who, who moved and who supported. I don't have it written down.
Okay. We have Ms. Piden and Ms. Aquino.
That's for the motion overall.
Okay, that was the motion.
Yeah. For the amended motion, to, to amend the motion for the language, we need a motion.
Okay, can I have a motion to amend G2 to add in also ECSC, GSRT?
I'll move.
Moved by Ms. Cardamone, supported by Ms. Piden. Okay, again, we will add in addition, they will read that the Chippewa Schools Board of Education approved returning students, grade K-5 and K-12 CLP, ECSC and GSRT to remote learning effective Monday, November 23rd. The target date for return to in-person instruction is Wednesday, January 20th. That's how the motion would read. Questions or comments? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Cardamone.
Cardamone, yes, Piden?
Yes.
Ms. Aquino?
Yes.
Mr. Benner?
Yes.
Ms. Deming-Sack?
No.
Mr. Patzer?
Yes.
Mr. Sova?
Yes.
Amended motion carries, so now we need to vote on the original motion.
As amended, right?
As amended.
Okay. So any questions or comments to the amended motion before we vote?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Go ahead, Beth. You can go first, Jill.
All right, Ms. Deming-Sack.
So I'm curious, Ron, can you answer how many cases have been out of CLP?
I cannot, it could, I'm, I'm, just right now, I'm not aware of, of cases in CLP, but I'm, I'm not 100% sure.
And have any of the CLP staff members indicated that they want to return to remote?
I, I did not, I did not talk to them. I do know this. In my conversations with some of them, they were very, they were very enthusiastic about being hybrid. But I did not talk to all of them.
Okay. we, my concern is, is that we don't, we have a target date of January, whatever, it's different all the time. And, and I don't, what are, based on what, what numbers? I think we, it, it feels like we just make them up as we go along. And I'm not confident at all that I would tell anybody to assume that we would be going back in January. Because I don't know what we base it on. So again, we're gonna have half of our community that are somewhat satisfied with remote and the other half the community that are not satisfied at all. And this is gonna be unpopular to mention, but we lost over 800 students on count day this year. That's, that's a lot of students. That's gonna really affect our budget next year when we go to create, if we don't get those students back. I don't know that we're not gonna lose more now. Because other schools are trying, are figuring this out. I'm not at the meeting today because I'm in quarantine because my husband has COVID. It's inconvenient, yes. But would I rather take these two weeks and be inconvenienced than have my child home? They're doing so much better in school. I don't know, I don't know any of the, of their friends that aren't. I, I just, I, this is a big decision. I know I'm not gonna change anybody's minds, but this, this decision will be detrimental to many, many children. Denise talked about how her grandchild is doing well because they have people at home that are supporting them in whatever environment they're in. Lots of kids don't have that. Lots of them.
Yeah, I'm aware of Jill.
I know, I mean, I'm not saying they're not, but we've had people speak that their students are doing well. Yeah, because both of their parents are educators. It's, the kids that we are hearing from, the parents on either side are not the ones that I'm mostly concerned about. Because I know that their parents are concerned for them. They're going to do their best for them. But that's a lot of people that we haven't heard from. There's still a lot of students that don't have computers. You know, a lot of the emails we get, it's not hard to research somebody. You can look up on Facebook and see what they're outdoing. They're going to softball games, they're going to kids' sports tournaments. They're having surgery that's not life-threatening. They don't feel like they're putting anybody else at risk. Yet they don't want students in their classrooms because then that puts them at risk. I, I'm offended at the fact that somebody would say that I don't value elementary teachers and they don't even include CLP teachers, so I'm gonna include that, that I don't value them as much as I value secondary. That's offensive to me. These students do better in the classroom. We have things set up to help mitigate the, the, the problems of COVID. Are we going to have issues? Yes. Of course, we're gonna have to be flexible with it. I don't, I'm not even gonna say some of the things I'm thinking, but I, I really hope that we, you know, Ron says that we're dedicated to our, the mental health of our students. I, I think that, then that needs to be tripled. If he thinks that we're doing a really good job on that. If we're going back to remote, there needs to be a section of the day that that is, that that is what we commit to. Because there's no one checking on these students at home. The teachers are not having, they're not making the context that they are that when they're in the building and they're seeing them. So I, I mean, this isn't an easy decision. There's no right answer. That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Deming-Sack. Other comments by the board?
I, I have something.
Ms. Piden?
And, you know, the last couple of meetings have been uncharacteristically quiet. And because this is a very hard decision and we've all struggled with it and no answer is right. But in terms of this, to me, it does come down to safety. And as Ms. Deming-Sack said about Facebook, we, we've all seen what our community is outdoing. I have 100% faith in our plan to keep it out of schools. But there's a reason it's coming in and this needs to be a community partnership. And unfortunately, we're not seeing that. When we see the pictures that are on Facebook and people not masked, people in large groups, people going out to dinner, doing all those things that are convenient and normal because we have pandemic fatigue. And it's not helping the cause when we're not in this together. And for me, that is the most frustrating part. It's frustrating to me that we can agree to disagree and we can do so respectfully. But a lot of times, the comments that are on Facebook are downright cruel and offensive. And that doesn't get, that doesn't help the situation at all. But understanding that we're in this together as a community is a great place to start. And we haven't gotten there yet. And that's a lot of what is driving my decision, especially in terms of the safety aspect of this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Piden. Ms. Aquino?
I have one more comment. I just wanted to clarify something that Jill said about caring more about elementary teachers than secondary. And, yeah, we've received emails from teachers. We've, we've received emails, teachers spoke tonight that they wanted hybrid. It's, it's, everyone has their own opinion about what's best and I, so I just wanna make a comment. This isn't about liking any teachers better for me. Elementary, secondary, who spoke, who didn't speak, who sent me an email, who didn't send me an email. I look at staff emails and I know that people are afraid and I take that into consideration. But like Beth, I have to agree that my concern is mostly with what's gonna happen over the next few weeks and what, what our governor said. Also, I know a lot of people don't like what she says. That's your, everybody's prerogative to, you know, agree or disagree with that as well. But I just wanted to clarify that it's not about what teachers I like better. Has nothing to do with it for me, so just wanna clarify that. Or care more about.
Mr. Patzer?
Yeah, Mr. Roberts, Mr. Sibley, maybe Mr. Sibley, yeah. One of the board members, meetings, I'm sorry, one of the board meetings, was it said or was it mentioned that at semester time, students were able to make different choices on hybrid and virtual? Did I hear that at one, at one of the board meetings that, that at semester break, parents could make new decisions?
We did talk about the fact that we would look at requests to move in or out of the CVVA at the semester break.
Yeah.
There were no guarantees. So what we're doing is we're looking at all the flexibility we can create in our schedules, looking at second semester. So right now, our scheduling teams are looking at the second semester schedules to determine where they can add space for movement. So there is some possibility for movement, but we have a waiting list we're working out at the secondary level already.
So, so at this point, we're at point A now, going to point B the semester where students and parents may have different choices. So we have to fill this 20-day, 30-day gap. We need to reach that point, that 20, it's January 20th, where maybe people have the ability to make choices that make them happy. So to me, it seems like we have this gap here from point A to point B. 20 days, 13 school days till Christmas. I don't know, I'm struggling with disrupting school. Seems like if we can get to point B, then families get to make choices that make them happy. Then, I don't know, I don't know if I wanna disrupt the school and change everything around until we get to point B. That's.
I think if you're asking, if you're asking my opinion, I, I just think that the consistent.
No, I'm not asking your opinion, actually. I, I just, I'm just making a statement that at point B, families, I question his family have, gonna have choices. We said that, right?
Families have expressed what they are hoping for and we're trying to be as, as accommodating as possible, yes.
Right, so that's point B. So we're at point A, we need to get to point B. And so that's, that's, my thinking is correct, right? So I'm concerned about disrupting school for 13 days, 15 days, 18 days until we get to second semester when people can have, maybe have choices. So am I stating that correctly?
I believe so. I'm trying to follow exactly what you're saying.
Well, I'm saying, well, if we need to get from today, point A, semester, point B. At point B, families have choices. So if they're in hybrid, they, maybe they can switch if they're virtual, maybe they can switch. So people that are happy with being in school and people that are unhappy and they wanna go to virtual, they have to get to the semester time, then maybe they could switch to virtual.
It's possible.
Huh?
It's possible.
It's possible, so, so we're, so I'm struggling with the fact that we disrupt flow of their educational program right now, going from hybrid to virtual. And then semester time, they might be able to go to virtual anyhow. So that's what I'm struggling with, the fact that we would disrupt the flow of their current educational system program until we get to the semester time.
So at the elementary level, it, I don't know how much more flexibility there will be in the schedule between now and second semester. So at the secondary level, there, there are people working on that. So when you asked me, I thought you were referring to secondary. But now you're talking about the flexibility between now and then and the disruption. The disruption would be to the elementary. So I don't know how much more flexibility there will be for the elementary at semester.
Okay, well, that was my question, yeah. Because I, I did hear you mention at a meeting at second semester, they might be able to change what program they're in. Cause I, I did hear you mention at a meeting at second semester, they might be able to change what program they're in. So it seems like we need to go from today till the semester.
So initially that was our plan and then it was expressed to us that we should make accommodations to families who requested early and not wait until the end of a trimester or semester. So most of the moves we've been making are prior to that time. So when we first proposed this to the board, we talked about changes being made at the trimester or semester. But then we were asked to make those moves earlier based on requests from the community.
Right.
So we've made most of the changes that we can at the elementary level at this point.
Okay, so I don't know. It seems like most of the people would want to stay in school.
Well, certainly. Ms., Ms. Queen?
Can't hear you.
Frank, we can't hear her.
Okay, hold on. I'm going to turn my hands. Just a second. Is that better?
No.
Hit it down. There you go.
There I go. Okay. I know that there needs to be consistency, especially at the secondary level with scheduling. So if someone took history one, they have to take history two, obviously. Is there a way to go back to ground zero, to start zero and say, okay, everybody, if you had a choice now, this would be starting second semester or trimester. What would everybody want? Would there be any way that we might be able to say we could accommodate everyone if everybody started over? No, with, no. Okay, that's all I wanted to know. And that's because we don't, we would have to make some teachers virtual or it's just impossible to schedule at the secondary level.
Andy here. We cannot
He said that, oh, okay.
Mr. Sibley said that we'd have to completely reschedule all secondary schools to do that.
And we just can't do that or we just don't, it's not possible to do it or it's just such?
It's not, I, I don't see it as being possible to do in the timeframe in which we need to do it. Additionally, everything has to fit and I'm not a scheduling expert. I do deal with it on a much higher level. But we, we have staffed based on the election to go into the CVVA at the beginning of the school year. That is how we staffed. The, you know, that is, I think, the, the benefit of what we do in the CVVA is it is our teachers, other districts are not offering that type of a program. Since it's our teachers, we had to schedule accordingly and maximize seats in, in, in those sections. And so to, to try to dismantle, you know, those entire schedules is no guarantee that we'd end up even having schedules, more schedules or less schedules. It, it probably end up working about the same. And that's if the puzzle pieces all matched together as you go through that scheduling process. Paul, am I missing anything that you want to add?
No, I think, I mean, that's the general idea. I mean, it's, it's usually a process that takes three to six months to do. And so for us, that includes using software programs that currently we would not be able to use because you can't use the software programs while they're live. So our current scheduling system is Power School.
Right.
And so that system is currently live. You'd have to close the system essentially to use scheduling tools to then create a schedule. Those schedules are based on requests. And so again, our schedule this summer, we, we shrunk this down to about a month span from August to September to create schedules based on an existing schedule that already, that was already created. With then creating almost another school within that. So the reason we can't do that now is because it's the process itself of identifying not only the requests of which student wants to be where, but then the requests of courses they have. So we really would be rescheduling everything at this point.
Right. So I guess because I'm a layman and don't understand all this, I go in my, in my mind, I'll say, oh, well, some of the teachers that are teaching live may want to go to, you know, virtual. So it might all just work out like, you know, like in, in the, in the world that I want to live in anyway. So, okay, thank you. That was my question. I was just, you've answered it. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, other questions, comments by the board? So just to follow up a little bit on, on that question that Mr. Patterson and Ms. Queen was speaking of, and I think one of our, our parents was mentioning it also along with some board members, was to do something with CVVA to get it to where we could add students or, or, and, and our administration has worked tirelessly. Mr. Roberts has directed his cabinet to work on that as stated tonight. They, they went, worked very, very hard to, to accommodate all, but I think Mr. McCary said 40 families at this time for elementary at least. So that's tremendous. We thank you for your efforts. That, that's been the board has directed you to try to find ways and you, you're doing it. We appreciate that. One of the other things that the board has asked Mr. Roberts to look into is the virtual classroom. And we would like to bring a virtual classroom into our second semester next year in Chippewa Valley Schools. We've tasked Mr. Roberts to check into that and that is currently ongoing at this time. So Mr. Roberts, as progress is made, will report back to the board on that issue. So I wanted to bring that up also while we were having that conversation. Lastly, my comments on this vote tonight and, you know, I think some, I want people to know out there that our, our administration, our, our cabinet, Mr. Roberts have, they've really wanted to keep these things open. They have wanted to keep these schools going in hybrid. The decisions that are being made by the board are, are are on recommendations from Mr. Robertson's cabinet, who have the boots on the ground every day in this district, who, who are in those classrooms. As Mr. Roberts said, he's been to every school. And it pains this staff, our administrators to, to have to make a recommendation to go back to a vote. It is not a light decision on their part. So I want the community to know that, that really this, these administrators want to have these children in school. That's not, they're not making this recommendation because the board proud of them to do that. This was the recommendation Mr. Roberts called and let us know today that, that he would be adding to the motion based on his meetings with other superintendents throughout the county here and his own cabinet and what they think is safest and best for our children in this district and our community at this time when we have a global pandemic going and we have numbers skyrocketing. You heard Mr. Roberts tonight. They're going straight up. The trajectory is straight up and they're going, it's going to get higher and higher and higher. We just can't, we can't wait as Mr. Roberts said in his comments till, you know, we have a real problem in our schools. We have massive outbreaks, massive sick community members, massive sick children. This is a responsible thing to make this decision now, keep people out of harm's way. So I wanted to share that with the board also. Anything further? All right. So G2 approved return to remote learning grades K5 and grades K12 CLP along with ECSC and GSRT. Roll call vote, Ms. Cardamom.
Ms. Puddin?
Yes.
Ms. Queen?
Yes.
Mr. Bednar?
Yes.
Ms. Deming Zach?
No.
Mr. Patterson?
No.
Mr. Selva?
Yes.
Five two, motion carries.
Okay. So again, the motion did pass after this Friday, beginning Monday, the elementary K12 CLP and yes, ECSC, GSRT will return to remote learning. And again, this can be changed anytime if, if there have a vaccine come out and, or the numbers started spiking downward. This could be changed and a mo, as, as long as it would take us for, to us to pick a board meeting together to put a vote together. So we did put some dates on there as Mr. Roberts explained. By January 20th, we will have a decision whether we're returning from the remote or staying in. And same with the secondary schools, which I believe is January 25th. This date set. But again, that could change by posting a meeting for a couple of days and then having a vote by the board where we could return if the numbers were to become to a safer level. So, all right, with that, thank you, board members. We'll move to, we already did union communication. We'll move to I administrative reports.
There are no administrative reports nor curriculum updates this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Up and by the board.
I, um, I would like to congratulate Laura on her, um, election victory and, um, this, well, I think is this your last meeting, right, Laura?
I have, I, um, in my portion of up and by the board reading my letter.
Oh, okay. I apologize. All right. So anyway, I want to congratulate you and wish you well in your new position.
Thank you very much.
And I would like to thank the community for expressing the, their, their appreciation of the teaching staff, you know, repeatedly in realizing how hard this job is, especially this year. And so I just want to thank the community for that. That's it. I'm done. Thank you.
The board members, comments? Questions? Ms. Cardamom?
I, um, have a letter that I need to, uh, Dear Mr. Bednar, on November 3rd, 2020, I was elected to the Clinton Township Board of Trustees. My term begins on 20th at noon. In compliance with the Incompatibility Act, I am obligated to resign my position with the Chippewa Valley School Board. Since beginning this position, January 1st, 2015, I've been honored to serve with some of the most dedicated and honorable people I have ever met. The level of commitment and passion that I have witnessed from the staff, Chippewa Valley Schools, and that extends from the district administration to the lunch monitors and crossing guards is incomparable. I have learned so much from my fellow board members and wish you well as you continue to struggle with our current challenges in the midst of this global pandemic. I truly wish there was an easy answer that would address the advocate them of needs, physical needs and mental health needs of our students and staff. I know that you will continue to do your very best in wading through these unprecedented waters. Please know that in my new role, I will continue to advocate for the needs of the district and hope to demonstrate a great community partnership between Clinton Township and the Chippewa Valley Schools. In order to transition smoothly, will be effective tomorrow, November 17th, 2020. With warmest regards, Laura Cardamom, Secretary.
Okay. So you have a verbal resignation from Ms. Cardamom on the record. And Ms. Cardamom, you'll be turning in a written one, you said, as soon as we can get it to Mr. Roberts, but the verbal will suffice backed up by the written. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I, I speak on behalf of the board to say that, you know, we're very thankful, Laura, for your, your dedication to this community, your, your comments and, and your insight as a, you know, clinical psychologist or counseling has brought a nice, uh, uh, roundabout to the board, an experience in, in, in your, your calling. So and as a parent in the district, obviously with your sons, it was a pleasure, uh, meeting your family and your husband Roger and so on. And, and you're going to be sorely missed by the board. But we know you're going to do great things with Clinton Township and we look forward to definitely working with, with you and the board there in Clinton Township to have a great partnership. So Laura, again, on behalf of the community, the board, administration, thank you so much for all your work with Chippewa Valley Schools and wish you the best of luck with Clinton Township.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, just a couple of things pertaining Ms. Cardamom. We are still waiting for some clarification from our legal team as far as appointment of a replacement for Ms. Cardamom. Uh, one of the things we're looking at is that, uh, the calendar timeline kind of dictates that uh, after screening, interviewing and appointing a board member, that board member would never serve, uh, would never be able to come to a public meeting, would never be able to vote on a motion. So we, we're not sure at this point if we are going to appoint a board member or simply, uh, we'll have one, two new boards. Term expires at the end of this year, end of December. So, um, we may choose not to appoint another member if, if unless we have to by law. And we're waiting for clarification from our legal team on that. Um, if that's the case and we do not have to, our two new board members, congratulations to them also. Mr. Voitovich and Ms. Andreoxko, um, who will be joining our, our board team here and team in Chippewa Valley Schools uh, this January, uh, first meeting in January. Okay. Um, one last thing here. We, Ron asked and we need or want to get his evaluation done. So there's two ways we can do it. We could either meet next Monday and I believe we will be meeting virtually from now on. It's my understanding. So we could have a meeting next Monday to do Mr. Roberts' evaluation. Um, it'll be a closed session under employee confidential. Or we could try to put it following the board meeting on December 7th. So I don't know what the board's pleasure is. If they'd rather try to get together next Monday and complete that or do it following the board meeting on the 7th. So those are, those are kind of the two options, Ron, so they need to have it completed by that next board meeting. So I don't know what the board feels.
What did you say? What did Andy just say?
He said, I, do we have to do it virtually? I would prefer not to.
Right.
That's up to the board.
Oh, George is
If, if you're looking for people to speak up on this, I, I'm on 12-hour shifts right now. So I, on opposite Mondays, I'm not available at all.
Okay.
Well, George, um, and Jill got booted out.
Wow.
Okay. Well, if George cannot attend, then Laura, I think we should wait till the 7th then. I would have preferred Monday. I mean,
Wait for Jill to get back in for this conversation. Oh, she's back.
Jill, are you with us?
Yeah.
Hi Jill?
Hi.
Good. I don't know how, but if you had a preference for having a virtual meeting or having an in-person meeting next meeting. And also you, you must, you'll be out of quarantine, I believe by then. So, um, I don't know, next Monday if you would be. Uh, but Mr. Sobal cannot attend next Monday. He's on a 12-hour shift. He'd be able to attend the 7th and do it after our normal meeting on the 7th. So I don't know if you had a preference, Jill?
No, I'm, either is fine.
Okay. Would you, would you want to meet in person or would you rather meet virtually?
It doesn't matter either.
I, I guess we can leave that open. Uh, as I explained in the email, till the end of the year, we can meet. A, a board member chooses to, to, to go virtual on their meetings, they may do so for any circumstances until the end of the year. So, um, we could call the meeting and if the board member didn't want to meet in person, they, they are able to attend virtually also, um, for that purpose. So I guess we can do that at Mr. Mr. Patterson. Mr. Roberts, can we, uh, will we meet here? On the 7th?
It's coming in. There we are. Yes, we can meet here.
Okay. So we'll meet here on the 7th and if board members aren't comfortable with the idea of coming in person at that time, especially a couple of weeks from now, what could possibly happen? They can, they are fine to participate virtually also, either way, in person or virtual. Okay. And I guess that'll do it, uh, for me. And I had one more question. Ron, we had mentioned that the 3,000 computers that we had ordered back in August, I think it was, or maybe early September are now being distributed?
Well, I think Sarah can best. So if Sarah wants to come down and get a mic, she'll know the timeline.
Um, not being distributed yet. They are in a warehouse being imaged and processed tomorrow morning. They're going to do a test to see how many we can do the second step to, and then we'll have a better idea of when we can get them on site and get them into the hands of the kids.
So we're starting distributing very shortly. How will we determine who, who gets a computer, a new?
I have the original list of requests from August and early September. Um, a lot of families indicated at that time that they would like a computer, but they could get by with sharing or they had something to get through. So I'm going to start at the beginning of that list of anyone who did not receive one to backfill that. So really in order of requests received. Um, we have throughout the last couple of months um, been able to provide computers for a lot of emergency situations, things where computers at home broke or special circumstances. So we've been able to provide for a lot of families.
Fantastic. And, and additional 9,000 computers are on order and should be arriving by year's end.
Yes, they should be arriving before the holiday break. And then as soon as we're back, we can get those. Those are going to be processed in a different system. It should be faster to get those processed and out to families.
Okay. So, so at every, every point in, at that point, every student, every in our, in our district where they have two or three children in their home, after that 9,000 is distributed, they will have a, a computer.
Correct.
So one, yeah, one, one-to-one is the term. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for your answers.
So do we expect that? I'm sorry. I just wanted to, timeline. When is she, when will that, by January?
For the, I would hope by the end of January or first For the, I would hope by the end of January or first week in February. Well, we're working to get that system in tune and autopilot set up.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's all right.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the board members?
Mr. Bednar, I just have something.
Ms. Tiden?
Sure, at this time of Thanksgiving, I want to say I am so thankful for our staff and our administration. You have worked harder than I ever could have imagined or hoped for. And I know that we are so blessed as a district because of it.
Yes.
I'm also thankful for my board because I know this has not been easy on any of us. But I've never met seven people who are more passionate, dedicated, or fiercely love kids like me. And I'm also thankful for our community because I know that every time that our backs have been up against the wall, they have been there for us. And I know that they're going to come together and help us get through this. And they are going to be supportive in ways that I could not imagine. And finally, I'd like to congratulate Laura. Laura, I've been thankful to serve on this board with you. You have become a great friend, but I know that you're going to do great things for the township. And you're going to continue to make us proud.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Pardon.
Thank you.
And the feeling is mutual, I'm sure, by the board.
Thank you, Beth.
Okay, so that, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. It's going to be a lonely one, I think, for all of us this year, so.
Everyone stay home.
We gotta do our part, everyone's got to do their part, and we will do, we will. And we will do this, we will beat this pandemic one way or another and bring our schools and children back. So with that, I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Quino.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Piden. Roll call, vote for the last time, Ms. Cardamom.
All right, Ms. Aquino?
Yes.
Ms. Piden?
Yes.
Mr. Bednar?
Yes.
Cardamom, yes. Ms. Demingzak?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes, and thank you, Laura.
Thank you, George.
Okay.
I'm Carrie.
Thank you, Ms. Cardamom, and we'll adjourn at 8:38 PM. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, community. We'll see you again on December 7th.